Madam Clerk, call the meeting to order.
Commissioner Pontilivski, Commissioner Basleys, Commissioner Sedano.
Here.
Commissioner Sefeli, Commissioner Copaz, Commissioner O'Day.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez, Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Chairman Romano.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of state.
For the record, Commissioner Rodriguez is here. And also, we welcome everyone that's here to participate in the meeting. I see my neighbors from Hoboken. Makes me happy to see them. Okay, start it off.
Mr. Administrator.
Hold on, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just before you start, I just wanted to put something quick on the record. Before the meeting, I met with Adam from the Prosecutor's Office. And I just forwarded a video statement to him. I was at an event two days ago and I've kind of just been concerned ever since. It relates to an incident that someone reported or discussed. And I am concerned about the individual safety that may have been mentioned as part of that. So I just wanted to put that on the record and I'll leave it. I asked that they maybe interview that individual, ascertain who the person is, where they live. Are they safe where they are? Do they need to be relocated? So I just, as an elected official, as I thought about it, I felt important to do it. I had originally checked with someone in the JCPD who checked with the ceasefire to see if they had a report. And their initial result is that they did not have a report on it. So I just wanted to make sure as somebody who's an elected official, I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Madam, you're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
I'd like to note that Commissioner Pontilivski joined us. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. Posting notice of Resolution 801 2025 on the County Commissioners Bulletin Board, First Floor Administration Building Annex, Jersey City, New Jersey. Copies of the above-mentioned resolution have been sent to the county clerk and the editors of the Carney Observer and the Star Ledger. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the caucus meeting of September 9th, 2025, and the regular meeting of September 11th, 2025?
Sedano and Romano.
Commissioner Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Copaz. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Here.
The next order of business is a discussion on today's agenda. I turn it over to Administration.
Mr. Administrator.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have no additional items, but with respect to with respect to item number 18 that was placed on the agenda, there is a new resolution that has been presented to the board for their consideration. I think it was placed at your, at your desk. So take a look and-
Does everybody have it? Everybody got it, correct?
Yes.
All right, a motion on to, we have to put it on? Ed? Counsel Florio?
Yes.
A motion to put it on, correct?
Well, I think, I think there should be a motion to amend.
Motion to amend. Go ahead, Bill.
I'm gonna move to amend, but I'm gonna just note for the record, at the next meeting, I plan to put another resolution forward related to the idea of creating a pilot program that would have apartment dwellers, or apartment developers, rather, pay a healthcare tax. But I'll flesh out what the union thinks of the details of that. So that could be part of the body of the resolution, because I think that at the end of the day, if there's not a long-term recurring revenue, we're gonna be sitting here over and over again. You know, as I was walking out of my office today, there was a, there was a headline from the now-no-longer Jersey Journal. And it said, CarePoint declares bankruptcy. And that was about one year ago. And here we are, sitting a year later with a legitimate threat of hospital, or hospitals closing. So these, you know, every year, every year, every year, people that work in those hospitals can't be subject to living that way, not knowing. Every year, there's gonna be one or two months where you might close hospitals because of revenue shortfalls. By the own admission yesterday, a representative that hospital said to me, you know, even with this, we anticipate a $20 million a year revenue shortfall. So, you know, I'm open to, to, to what form create, generating a recurring revenue stream for this to be. But I'd like to put at the next meeting, a new resolution with more detail of what the one where-for clause in this, in this particular item that was taken out of this resolution is trying to do.
Okay. On the resolution, on the revision.
On 18.
Amended.
Commissioner Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Copaz. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Walker. Chairman Romano.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker's here.
Yeah, Jerry said it.
Yeah.
Said yes.
He's here.
Okay, continue, Madam Clerk.
I have a question on 14. We pulled that on caucus. Commissioner O'Day, we putting that back on? That was the one where you wanted the additional information. It's on your desk.
Yeah, he asked to have it carried to the next meeting. We didn't.
Okay, good, so-
Carry to the next meeting.
To the following meeting.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I'm a pretty good reader, but I'm not that good.
A speed reader.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, could you log me in? I'm sorry, I joined late.
Al Sefeli is here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
According to the policy set by the Board of County Commissioners, members of the public are asked to limit their comments to five minutes when discussing agenda items and three minutes at the conclusion of the meeting for persons who submitted a written request to discuss matters of public interest. At this time, the public may address the board on any item on the agenda only. Please keep your comments limited to five minutes. Are there any speakers on the agenda items only? Seeing none?
Oh, we got one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Manny, come on up, Manny. By the mic.
Chairman, before the speaker begins-
Hold on one second, Manny. Go ahead, Counselor.
I, I just wanted to check with the clerk to make sure that internal timer is operational this week.
No, it's not, but we have manual timer.
All right, fine.
What's the, excuse me, what's the holdup that it's taking so long?
They're waiting for a part.
Pardon the interruption, Chairman.
Go ahead, Manny. Name in the-
Manuel Rivera Soler, Hoboken.
Welcome back.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner. Buonasera, buonasera tutti. Buona mese della cultura italiana americana e patrimonio italiano. As well, Feliz mes de la cultura latina y hispana de el condado de Hudson. Counsel, Commissioner, pardon me, that is quickly translated, I guess, Happy Italian-American Heritage Month and Happy Hispanic and Latin Heritage Month to everyone in Hudson County. And of course, we continue to celebrate both cultures proudly in our county and in Hoboken, as well as we did with you this morning. And we appreciate your presence as a resident of Hoboken, if you might not. So actually, what I'm here tonight to speak on is the importance. We are here tonight because Hudson County Hospital's systems are are in special need, especially Hoboken Hospital. It, it, what I mean is at a crossroads. This is not just about a building, a budget. This is about people's lives. Sorry, it makes me a little emotional. The patients who walk through the doors and families rely on this care given at these locations. The employees also dedicate their lives every day to the communities that they serve and should also be considered in every decision. So Mr. Chair and Commissioners, as we think about when we make a resolution like you just did, number 18, expressing it clearly to members of the public and letting them also have a say in the process is very important, especially for the county, of course, and for my beloved city of Hoboken as yours, Mr. Chair. Losing any hospital, but losing a hospital like Hoboken is, is it is more than a tragedy. It's a shame that it could happen at any moment because of special interests of somebody else wanting to make a profit on people's lives and suffering. So I hope that, yes, this distinguished body does always maintain an eye on the fact that we do need hospitals. And we do need especially, I'm advocating for the one in Hoboken, where seniors, persons with disability and families of all sorts depend on it. And with that, I keep saying, Counsel President, pardon me, Mr. Chair, I would also like to ask and also like to join in number two, number two, three, and four. If you could please help members of the public understand a little bit more, I know that there's a one line here, but if explanation can be given in how the dispersment of the grants are gonna be done. And also, just quickly, does it have to be now? I know that we can get it, the resolution in the back, but of course, at this moment, it is imprudent to just grab one while somebody may want it again. But if information could be given, and again, number 12 and the purchasing, of course, these numbers, A and I, it's just how, how is it that it gets dispersed? How is it that these amounts, I know that for trucks and stuff, and those parts must be extremely expensive, especially these days. But what is the counterbalance between purchasing a part that may or may not cost $50,000 or such, or $40,000 and this extra addendum? The justification, would it, would it be prudent to perhaps purchase something else or perhaps do something other? Or if not, just can members of the public understand the methodology as to why the purchasing and the numbers? And with that, Mr. Chair, I will yield back. Thank you.
You're welcome. Manny, when, when you're finished speaking, we'll answer some of your questions.
Yes, I'm, thank you, sir.
Who can answer that, Abe? Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the budget amendments relate to a grant from, that the Sheriff's Office received, and that is to do highway safety and pedestrian safety. It's usually, you know, assigning sheriff's officers to to do, you know, DWI and things like that. That's, that's the purpose of the grant.
What about number four? You said four, right?
Three and four, they're, I'm sorry. Number four has to do with renewing a contract with social decision-making for stop the school violence. This was a grant that the Department of Human Services obtained. And this group provides specialized training in the school to deal with, you know, this particular issue. In term- I'm sorry, did you-
Yeah, and 12 what, 12 what letter, Manny? A and I?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
I think it was the purchasing agent, the auto parts, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Flowers.
Well, flowered and auto parts.
Flower, flower. 12A and I. Flowers and auto parts.
Yeah, the, the auto parts, what that is, is that we, the county maintains a fleet of vehicles, trucks, et cetera. So these vehicles, as they break down, we have to buy parts. And we use those parts to replace the parts that, that that wear out and they need to be replaced. So these are open-ended contracts. So what we do is, as we start to run out of the money, as long as the contracts are still within the term, we then come to the board and request that they appropriate additional monies so that we can purchase these parts, so that we can keep the fleet, you know, maintained and on the road.
As needed.
As needed, yes.
Thank you. And number A is just the landscaping, the amount. Letter A, Abe, you mean letter A, 12A.
12A?
The flowers.
Hold on a second. Let me just get there. Oh, this is for the I believe this is for the parks.
Right.
Yeah, what, the parks all the time, and the director can amplify my, my answer. They, they do a lot of landscaping. So there may be things that they have to, you know, replant flowers or things that, to keep everything nice. I don't know if Jonathan, is he here? Oh, Kevin.
Kevin's here.
Kevin, you want to address that further, if you can? It has to do with the planting materials, flowers, and supplies. And that's a two-year, that's a two-year amount that was pursuant to a bid.
Yeah, the contract is for not just plant materials, but for fertilizers, pesticides, anything, any kind of garnish and a material that the parks needs to maintain our parks.
Okay, I appreciate the answer, Mr. Chair. It was just a clarification and it was given just that the money is being allocated, is being held. It's not that you're spending this money outright.
That's correct.
That's what the people want to know.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Thank you all.
You're welcome, Manny. Next speaker.
Are there any other speakers on the agenda items only?
Motion to close.
May I have a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda? Second.
Copaz and Sedano.
Commissioner Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Copaz. Commissioner O'Day.
Come back to me in a minute.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah, go on.
Aye, he said aye.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. We have one ordinance for introduction. It's establishing dedications within county parks. Commissioner Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys.
Yes.
Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Copaz. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced. We have one ordinance for second reading. The ordinance amending Hudson County Administrative Code pursuant to the applicable provisions of the optional county charter law, NJSA 40:41A-1. This is the time fixed for hearing of this ordinance, which was introduced at the meeting of September 25th, 2025. Advertises required by law, together with a notice of hearing for this time. It's been posted on the County Commissioners Bulletin Board and made available to the general public. Are there any speakers on this ordinance?
Motion to close.
Seeing, seeing none, a motion to-
Hey, Copaz.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question, go ahead, Bill.
This, this involves the removing of weights and measures from the sheriff to the water department.
Correct.
So how much revenue per year does that division currently generate? Approximately?
I don't know, Cheryl?
Over the top of my head, Commissioner, I don't know, because that, that revenue gets deposited into a trust fund. Well, currently it does. It might change once you move it over.
No.
No, it cannot set up orally.
No.
No. Won't change.
Commissioners, I'll have the total amount for you before this meeting ends.
So my, my second question is, my understanding is currently, the trust fund that it's in is then utilized by the sheriff?
Well, it's utilized by weights and measures.
By weights and measures, which is under the sheriff. So could it only be used by weights and measures and not used for any other, other costs that the sheriff has?
It's limited to weights and measures because they, well, I'm sure you know what they do. So they, they, they purchase equipment, supplies.
Staff.
I don't know if you can use staff for it.
Not use for staff?
No.
No.
So the amount of revenue generated by it isn't sufficient enough that it would, it self-sustaining, to use that as a term?
Yeah, I don't think it's self-sustaining, no.
The, it is guided by statutory provisions as to what can and cannot be done.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but none of that revenue, under any circumstance, under the current or now what will be the new placement of where it's located, none of that ever finds its way into any other general revenue line? Okay.
Commissioner, if you want, we can send you an opinion on that.
That's fine, yeah, no rush. I'm just, I was making cl-
Can I ask something?
Go ahead, Al.
So, but, but this has nothing to do, as I understand it, with vehicle weights and measures? Like for, for overweight trucking, because those, those penalties go somewhere else.
Yeah, no, the, the weights and measures-
Just the local merchants.
Right, exactly, Commissioner. Merchants, that's correct. It's not, it has nothing to do with all overweight vehicles.
Is anyone, anyone here could answer, answer any of my questions? Oh, there you go.
Commissioner, how are you? Frank Alonso, Superintendent of Weights and Measures. The trust account of Weights and Measures is only used for weights, measures, equipments, vehicles. The only thing it doesn't cover is staffing. Everything else comes out of the trust account for Weights and Measures.
So staffing is paid by the county?
Correct, sir.
County budget, and then all the other costs are paid out of that? Do you know approximately how much revenue is generated by that?
So in, in registrations, anywhere between 200 and 250,000, it all varies on the business that are open or closed in the county. And fines also, Commissioner. So it all depends on fines issued throughout the county. Now, with the cannabis population growing, there's going to be an average of 300 licenses issued in the county, which are definitely gonna generate revenue for the county, again, or for the trust funds.
So, so those licenses are issued through that office?
So they're issued through the state of New Jersey, inspected through the Office of Weights and Measures.
So the state issues them, which I'm familiar with, and then it's your responsibility to inspect?
Correct.
What do you inspect the places for?
We inspect them for the scales, the ounces, the pounds that are sold in the businesses, and also now with the cannabis-
You don't check the product, though, right?
Well, no, we don't inspect the product, Commissioner. We also inspect what they call the wet weight of the plant that comes in, if it's fresh, fresh cannabis.
And then, what's your, what's your exact title?
Superintendent of Weights and Measures.
Does that title require a certification?
Yes, I am certified by the state of New Jersey as required in Title 51.
So you had to go through what, classes or courses or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
And we do continuing education every year.
Okay, thank you.
And as part of that, as part of the cannabis certification, did you graduate with high honors?
Yeah.
I, I did, Commissioner.
Oh, that's valid.
Are there any additional speakers or comments on this ordinance?
Hold on. There are no speakers, we closed the public hearing. We just had a question prior to vote, yes.
The current balance in the Weights and Measures Trust Fund is about $718,500.
Wow.
Money.
Use it, carries over into the-
Yes.
Okay.
Trust fund just carries over.
Go ahead, Al. Question?
No, 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 I'm fine.
On the final adoption, Commissioner Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Copaz. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. This concludes the items of business on today's agenda. Are there any comments from the Commissioners on the business of the board?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Director Di Filippo and his staff and Director De Lassandro for really making the Columbus Park Italian-American ceremony, the annual one, just very, very classy and well-received and a very warm celebration ceremony. So thank you all for the work that you did for that. Thank you. Any other Commissioner, go ahead, Billy.
Kevin Wong here. I know Jonathan's being honored tonight.
Kevin's here.
Kevin, on the Lincoln Park soccer field, what, what do you estimate the timeline now for them to be able to begin and complete the construction of the field?
I'm thinking we're gonna, we're gonna start aerating it first, probably soon as the season ends. And then, over the winter, all the weeds will die out. We'll start establishing new lawn. And then, probably, I'm thinking maybe late spring.
So you think you'd be, you'd be done, you'd be able to play on it?
I think so. Well, yeah. When the grass is established.
Okay. And, and obviously, this field is gonna be more of a it's a profession, but it's a full, it's a full-size soccer field as opposed to what was there before. It wasn't a field that was just used as one.
Right. Yeah, it's gonna be shifted over slightly, so the grades will be much better, more, more flatter, for a better-
It's also bigger.
It'll be bigger, too.
Are you taking out, are you taking out one of the baseball?
Yes, we are.
So will the soccer goals be permanent or no?
I haven't, I'm not sure about that. There may be like inserts in the ground where it'll stay in. But I could discuss that with Jonathan.
Obviously, on like 10 and 11, where they, where they do it, it's, it's, it's gated in and easy, it's right near the, the large storage area, so there's places to take it. Here, that really isn't the case. So I'd like to just understand how, how that, how that relates as to the actual goals themselves.
Right. We'll talk it over.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one other thing. Can we, Denise, can we do with maybe schedule it for early next week? We could do it by Zoom, a, a special Public Resources Committee about the, the building that's gonna be built in Mercer Park. Because Commissioner Walker and I, and obviously, I've commended the county before in, in being able to have a, a local minority contractor as the entity that's gonna do the project. But as, as I've said, and the Administrator would know, those, those local minority contractors have additional challenges, sometimes with bonding, that, than other big contractors do. So I think that the, the, the individual will be able to address that. But by addressing that, I think we want to have a discussion as how to find a way to have a speedier process, especially in the beginning of the project, for payments based on a smaller contracts, contractors' limitation to lay out capital as opposed to a large one. And, and knowing the county's strong commitment to wanting to give minority contractors opportunities, I think our ability to create some flexibility in that would, 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 would shine well for us as a great example. As some, as someone who, who walks the walk and creates real opportunities and doesn't create opportunities on paper that no one's able to take advantage of.
I, I also neglected to say Cultural Affairs for setting it up, so I thank Director Yulings also and her staff for that. Okay, any other Commissioners, before we continue? Continue, Madam Clerk.
Are there any comments from the Chief of Staff to the County Executive?
Really brief comments. I look forward to our discussion about the next resolution bill. I think that's actually a really interesting topic. I'm going to ask everybody, as I did yesterday at the rally for the hospital, I'm going to implore everyone in this room and everyone at home listening in to please try to work in unity to solve problems in the county. I understand there are some issues, but I'm also going to implore everyone to use their listening ears, as I say it, because my children get told to use their listening ears all the time, so sorry, but I'm a mom. So please use your listening ears tonight when we're discussing these issues, and please pay attention closely to what is stated by the Chairman and by the County Engineer about issues that may be happening right now. I just ask that everyone listen and hear, and then talk reasonably. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try.
Billy doesn't-
Not always easy.
That's all right, let's go.
Go ahead, continue, Madam Clerk.
This is the time for persons who submitted a timely written request to address the board on any matter of public interest. Please remember to limit your comments to three minutes. Please remember to limit your comments to three minutes. The first speaker is Raymond Mitchell.
Well, Ray's coming up. I just want to read a statement uh to maybe allevi- alleviate some of the things that are gonna happen uh after the, with the other speakers. And this will, they'll uh have an opportunity after they each speak uh to meet with people afterwards. There, there is an abundance of misinformation and falsehoods being spread regarding the reconstruction of River Road in West New York, Bergen, North Bergen. First and foremost, it is critical for residents to know that once work is completed, the roadway will no way be different than it has been before. A five-lane roadway, two lanes northbound traffic, two lanes southbound traffic, and a middle turn lane. Turn lane. Another misconceptions. Bike lanes are not a new thing. There have been bike lanes on River Road since two thousand eleven. Those unprotected lanes are being replaced by a protected two-way bicycle track on the northbound side of River Road to serve the growing number of cyclists in the area. This will in no way reduce the number of vehicular lanes or hinder traffic. Installing these protected lanes is in keeping with the county executives and the board's pledge to end needless fatalities on our roads. We want to be clear, the delays on this project are unacceptable and inexcusable. Simply put, to say we are dissatisfied with the performance of the contract on this job is an understatement. The county executives and the members of this board have, uh, have expressed their complete displeasure and frustration. We will continue to hold this contractor accountable and to ensure that this job is completed safely and as expeditionally as possible. Unfortunately, New Jersey procurement law required that the county hire the lowest responsible bidder to perform the resurfacing work. We were required to hire the contractor to this, to do this job because their price was the lowest, lowest. Clearly, in this instance, the contractor has not been up to the task. Today, we are calling on our partners in the state legislature to reform our procurement laws so that when we hire someone to do a job, we get what we pay for, we get it right in a safe and timely manner. That's from our Department of Engineering. So continue, Madam Clerk. Ray, you're up.
My three minutes.
Okay, as we all know, my name is Raymond Mitchell. I'm back here once again. Um, trying to find out what this mystery is all about with my father, why he has strangle marks on his face. And uh, the last time I was here, as Ramallo stated, that my dad had COVID and I was with the prosecutor's office, so I did a Oprah request here. I received nothing. Um, also, back in uh April twelfth, two thousand thirteen, I'd issue a Brian Stack. Everybody ever wants to look it up. Also Esther Suarez, um, the homicide unit, Esther Suarez has achieved a hundred percent solve rate, surpassing the national average of fifty-eight percent. My father must be in this hundred percent because she was the last prosecutor chief of officers. Um, so she's reliable, I guess, to, where's the autopsy of my father's COVID? Um, also uh Matthew Plankin. So office noted that Mello, Wayne Mello, has tried high-profile murder cases, so I would like to re-challenge that my father did not have COVID, that, yeah, I have pictures here of him strangled, okay? Also, they said about the death certificate here. The, he uh, the nursing home said that my dad died naturally of natural causes, from a heart condition. So now we have a natural condition from the North Bergen Harbor Bridge owned by Hackett-Sack Rooney Hospital. Also, we have the strangle marks. I also have an audio here of the nurse that I played last meeting. Um, and also now COVID, that my dad supposedly passed away of. I do have uh Brian Stack stated that he was gonna, you know, investigate. He never did. So I'm still waiting on Brian Stack and also the state. And also it says uh Brian Stack sends out these, with Mickey Sherrill, about just like soccer or baseball, the government is a team sport, so I'd like to know who's on Brian Stack's team here. And also Governor Murphy, he's covering up, as we could see Matthew Plankin. They allowed those nursing homes to be sold back in twenty twenty-two. I still have not received any information from them as well. And um I don't know how many times I have to keep coming out here to, to find out what's going on. Last time Adam was supposed to, first couple, you know, weeks that I was here, Adam, you were supposed to investigate and give me information. But I haven't received any of that.
Mr. Mitchell, your time is up.
Okay.
The next speaker is Frank Alonso.
So i- is there anything I could do, guys, since you're all officials of the, of the courts and stuff and help me out here?
Okay.
So I can get my information in?
Next, the next speaker. Mr. Mitchell, just so you know, on behalf of the board, we all feel compassion for your loss. Um, but we have nothing to do with this determining of factors of, of, of anyone's passing.
Okay. Well, can I at least get, you know, the investigation, somebody to investigate, to start it up?
Already had that with the prosecutor.
I have pictures and.
Okay, next.
I didn't have it with the prosecutor. They denied.
The next speaker is David Chankey.
What, you said Frank Alonso?
He just said he didn't want to speak.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. Uh, my name's David. I'm here to register my support and gratitude for the safety improvements being made on River Road. I've been a resident of Hudson County for about five years now. My spouse and I are raising a daughter here. We hope to remain here for many more years. There are um many reasons that I ride a bike. For transportation, since we sold our car a year ago for financial reasons, for my own health, since my doctor stressed the importance of cardio exercise after a health crisis, and for fun, because it's fun. Um, I often ride with my four-year-old daughter in tow in our bike trailer, taking her to doctor's appointments, the library, to visit friends. Of course, I'm very careful about the roads I choose to ride on with her. In fact, I'm severely limited in the places we can go together. I've spent um over a thousand hours on my bike since moving to Hudson County, and I always, always tell people that the most dangerous place I ride on my own is River Road, where speeding cars pass cyclists at frighteningly close distances. Even so, I ride on River Road because it's a crucial connection between Hudson County and the George Washington Bridge. The bridge is the only way people on bikes can ride into New York City. I want to applaud you all and thank you for the work you've done on this month in implementing a new bike lane on the county road. The work you're doing will save lives by making River Road safer for pedestrians, cyclists, and even drivers by calming traffic. The improvements you made are creating conditions that discourage reckless behavior. It's a very strong start, and I hope you'll add more protected bike lanes on county roads, like the Fourteenth Street Via Duct that connects Jersey City, Hoboken, and Union City. Again, I want to express how grateful I am for your efforts to make Hudson County safer by building a protected bike lane on River Road. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Jack McKee.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jack McKee. Appreciate you hearing me. I also am here to express my support for the River Road Protected Bike Lane. Um, I, I'm from New Jersey and I was out of the country for several years. When I came back in twenty twenty-three, the improvements that Hudson County had made in transit and bike lanes, including a bike share, was one of the reasons I cha- I chose to come back here. Um, I was able to sell my car. I save well more than ten thousand dollars a year, and my quality of life is better. I want to stay here. I like it here. It's my home state and um I think that Hudson County could be a world-class place. Right now, it's a great place. It could become world-class, and I think bike lanes are a big part of that. Very often, we hear this uh refrain that, oh, that's, well, that's great in Amsterdam, or that's great in Copenhagen, or I was in Taipei for a couple of years. That's great in Taipei, but here is different. But the reality is, it's the choices that we make as a community, as legislators, that transform our area from what it was to what it will be. I applaud you for doing this, and I hope to see this continue in other regions. The reality is that I can't ride all roads with my partner. It's not gonna happen. It's not comfortable for me, certainly not comfortable for her. And some of the roads that I ride on alone, I feel foolish and scared. I still do it because maybe I'm foolish and uh, but it's uh, it's crucial, and I think that something that's overlooked a lot is the economic benefit. I mean, the places that have good bike infrastructure are places that people want to visit. And for so long, we've been seeing, oh, the Sixth Borough in Hudson County as a whole, it's like the cousin of New York. But I have, I have high hopes for this place, and I think that bike infrastructure is a big way that we can, we can really, you know, encourage in-county, in-county mini tourism, so to speak. And all the data shows, it's not like, that's not conjecture, that's not my opinion. There is a wealth of data out there that says business revenue goes up, tax revenue goes up. Um, and just a general sense of that you feel connected to the place. You don't feel that uh, you know, Gutenberg or West New York is some faraway place that you would only get if you had an engine carrying you. It becomes a place that is connected to your life. And that's what I've seen here in Jersey City and Hoboken with the bike lanes, uh as intermittent as they are. I understand that's how it gets done. So if uh, just in the moments where it seems like, what's the point? The point is you do what you can, where you can, and you build on it, because once you build one little bit, people see the vision that many of us have, and I believe all of you have. So I applaud you. Keep at it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker. Next speaker is Anne Atticson.
Hi, um, I'm Anne Atticson. Thanks so much for doing this. Um, yeah, I'm also here in support of the River Road Bike Lane. Um, I live in Jersey City and I ride my bike for so many reasons, transportation, um, uh, as a form of exercise, and honestly, it's my best antidepressant. I have anxiety and, and depression, double winner. And uh, it really helps. Um, when people want to know how I'm doing, they tend to ask me if I've been riding my bike. So, yeah, this past summer, I was riding up along the waterfront, along Hoboken, and then up River Road once or twice a week, every single week. And I rode it so often, and often while I'm riding, I'm thinking, oh, this could be better, or this could be different, or this is beautiful and perfect. Um, and definitely River Road has many, many gaps where it's, does not feel safe to ride. Um, I know that this is just this one little piece, and there already was a shoulder there, but oh my gosh, a protected bike lane is going to be magic. It's, I'm so excited about it. Um, I've had the thought while riding, like, oh, the cars are going forty miles an hour, and here's me, like, nah. So sometimes I will go over onto the sidewalk, and then I feel like a total jerk riding on the sidewalk, because you're not supposed to do it, it's illegal, whatever. Um, and also there's tons of pedestrians who take the bus, right? And so they're walking there. Every time I see a pedestrian, I get off, I walk around them, I'm, I'm kind about it. Um, and so then I'm like, I need to get back on the road, so I go on the road, and then maybe it's fine. But then sometimes it's not fine, and a car will come so close, and you just feel the wind of the car. And in those moments, which has happened multiple times, I think I am harming my family right now. Like, I am doing a bad thing for my family, and I feel ashamed that I'm taking my life in, at risk. Um, if something were to happen to me, like without my salary, we, they would lose their home. I'm a hundred percent sure that's what would happen. Um, I don't know, it makes me sad to think about. Uh, also, they'd lose me, but um, yeah, and so just the options are not great, and there are so many cyclists. Even if I made the decision to never ride that road again, um, there's hundreds of other cyclists, and we all know this. One time I lost my wallet on the road, and this really nice guy um called me and drove the wallet back, and I was like, hey, it was my first time riding this road. And I was like, oh, I'm riding up this road, I don't know. And he said, oh, all the cyclists ride up this road. So anyway, it's a very popular place for cyclists. I believe that most drivers, even if they don't care about bike lanes, I really believe that drivers don't want to kill someone while they're driving. Right? Like they, like a person driving does not want to kill a cyclist. That would be a horrible moment in their life as well. Um, so safety of cyclists is better for everyone. All right. Anyway, thank you so much. I'm really excited about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Eling.
Hello, I'm Michael Elling. My wife and I have lived in West New York at sixty-first and Boulevard East for about ten years, after moving from Manhattan's cycling paradise to the micro-mobility wasteland of North Hudson County, where families depend on cars and unreliable north-south running buses that create their own congestion through poor spacing and parking control. With virtually no east-west mass transit, car, car use and traffic is inevitable. I cycle and walk daily. The few cyclists I see are mostly delivery workers, some recreational riders, and very few commuters. North, south, and east-west bike lanes in North Hudson and South Bergen counties would bring more cyclists and fewer cars. When West New York's only east-west connector rode through the, rode through the Palisades, Anthony M. De Fino, was resurfaced, no bike lanes were added, forcing e-bikes and scooters onto sidewalks. Furthermore, North Bergen Park is also missing lanes, despite the planned Boulevard East project, and Pershing Road in E-Hawken remains unsafe for cyclists. Tens of thousands have moved to River Road and western neighborhoods in the past two decades, yet little planning has addressed micro-mobility to reduce traffic and connect communities across physical and virtual divides in both counties. The river can be less than one hundred yards away, but might as well be miles for many residents living up west of the Palisades. And the opposite holds for those who live east on the waterfront. The two counties could consider funiculars and elevators to help older adults, those with disabilities, families and groups, cyclists and pedestrians, move safely east-west without cars, creating dynamic, integrated communities that bridge geographic, education, and culture divides while reducing north-south traffic. A protected bike lane on River Road with clear markings north to Fort Lee and south to the tunnel is essential to provide a safe route where none exists today. It would connect shoppers, diners, and commuters to shops, restaurants, ferries, light rail, and the cycling experience of Henry Hudson Drive. If you've never ridden there, I'll be glad to show you, and I'll include a bicycle. Regarding the River Road project, better planning control was needed for the six-turn signals and clearer communications using traffic coordinators and electronic signage. Drivers remain confused by the current setup, especially near the hospital and the shopping plaza. This is the real cause of the congestion, not the PBL. In conclusion, North Hudson and South Bergen need, one, comprehensive micro-mobility plan, improving both north-south and east-west movement for residents, visitors, and tourists, more bike lanes, and safety infrastructure, and finally, new ways, elevators, and funiculars to bridge physical and social divides. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michaela Renee.
Um, hello, uh, my name is Michaela Renee. I live directly on River Road, right in front of, right by the hospital. So I have a front row seat to this, which is why I'm here, to represent the many um neighbors that I have that have signed a petition because this was such an ill-conceived plan. I am not against bike lanes at all. I am against good bike lanes, functional, scalable bike lanes. And the fact of the matter is, the way that this bike lane was constructed, constructed with cement barriers that are so low, that one, you are going to have ADA compliance issues with the bus stops, and two, we're prone to flooding in that area. Flooding and snow, unable to see these barriers when, God forbid, we need to flee for our lives. I know that's a little bit of a hyperbole here, but it's something that, living in this area, I consider. And it's, and having to watch this day in and day out, I don't understand why those concerns weren't addressed before this board approved this project. Again, I am in full support of sustainable transportation, but there has been a lack of transparency from this, from this board. There has been a lack of consulting people that live in the area. I, I am happy that my, my county neighbors in Hoboken and Jersey City are here today to speak about the buslet, about um bike lanes. I'm happy that we all are so committed to this, but when you live right on that road and in that area, and you had no, like, no one asked you, businesses, residents, we live with, with, we live with the problems of a half-mile bike lane to nowhere. So I just want this board to consider, one, I understand this is going forward, and we're all running to, you know, paint those lines that for some reason, I can't fathom in my head that there's actually room for five lanes there. If you've actually driven through the area or looked at it, it's not really exactly, you're narrowing the lanes, which is another danger. But um I ask this board to look um into the compliance, especially for the passengers on New Jersey Transit, getting on and off that bus are now going to have to cross that lane. Any ADA compliance that is going to be violated from the current uh design, um, and what the effect of our community is going to be once this is finished. I know we can't stop it. I know you got to push forward, but this is going to be an issue that is not going away because, like the gentleman in the bar, I live here, I work here and I'm not leaving. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one correction. We, we only go on the recommendations of engineering. And after the meeting, if you'd like to talk to the engineers to get some of those questions answered, you're welcome to. This board does not decide the technical aspects.
Next speaker is Ebwanza Lumumba.
Hold the debate again, please.
Ebwanza Lumumba.
Okay, next.
Next speaker is Greg Bongin.
A little thank you for this opportunity. So since 2013, I've logged in.
Excuse me a little louder so we can.
Since 2013, I've logged in about 8,000 miles of cycling per year. Ninety percent of that goes from Hoboken up past the GW Bridge, um, GW Bridge. And so really, uh, happy about the bike lanes that are, were there before and are currently being put in. However, I do want some constructive feedback. The protected bike lane is only for a very short period and supposedly it's going to be bidirectional. I hope they're not expecting, uh, southbound cyclists to cross over and have to take that lane instead of proceeding along the west side of, uh, the River Road because I feel that's a dangerous thing to do. Second thing is that I don't feel like cyclists were sort of consulted on where this bike lane, protected bike lane should have been put. These protected bike lanes should be put at the most risky areas. That actually part of River Road, since I've ridden there, can't mention how many times, is actually one, one of the more visible areas for cars. There's actually areas very close to that on southbound side, which would, been a better placement for. So I don't think the placement was looked at from a, where is the most risk for cyclists? We're actually writing that to actually put a protected bike lane. So I would just ask in the future that somehow there's a better communication between people who actually cycle there and get some feedback on where these should be placed. Secondly, a protected bike lane seemed to be, you know, uh, in theory, very good. Um, and they, I, I do support them. However, it does reinforce the attitudes of cars that travel along there that cyclists belong in the gutter. Okay. So when you're on the protected bike lane, it's fine. And as soon as you get off that, it's like, what are you doing in my way? And so I would ask that in the areas where you don't have protective line, like the two things happen. Put the textured milling along the bike lane that's not protected so that when cars drift over into that, there's an alert system. And the second thing too is post-repeated signs that enforce the state law that says that cars cannot pass a cycle unless, pass a cyclist and they're less, unless they're at least four feet to the, uh, to, to, to the left of them. So that's one thing that I would ask because I think the, the knowledge of that law is, is lost on most, um, people who drive cars on there. And, and people don't understand that when they pass me, they're passing very close and we duck the light, I ask them why they're passing so close and they have no idea that that's the law. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Question to the speaker.
Right, Al.
Speaker, uh, the, the statute you just referred to about the four feet, um, clearance between cyclists and, uh, motor vehicles, do you know what the citation is? Cause I, I'm curious about the, this whole thing because I'm, I'm over here in the western part of the county. And the biggest problem that I have, uh, in, in my area is, um, not so much cyclists on the road as cyclists on the sidewalks with motor scooters, electric scooters on the sidewalk. And, um, uh, but, but I, I've, I've tried to research this, but, uh, the statute referred to about the four foot of right away or clearance, can you give, can you, if you have it now, if not, I'll give you my email address, you can cite me to it. Cause I'm curious about that. I, I, I never saw that before.
Okay, sir, if you can give that to the clerk, you give it to Al. Thank you. All right. Well, wait, 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 wait. Okay. All right, sir, if you can get that. If you have it.
I don't have a lot off the top. I've had.
Okay, next speaker.
When you had a chance, maybe.
The next speaker is Ernst Boyd.
Next speaker, go ahead.
Ernst Boyd.
Proud to say my neighbor, same floor, right across. Welcome, Ernie.
Hello, Mr. Romano. Hey, my name is Ernst Boyd, Marine View Plaza. I live in, I live in Hoboken. I've been there for 25 years and I cycle up to 9W as much as I possibly can. It's a beautiful road. We have a cycling paradise just a few miles from Hoboken, from the Jersey City. It's a cycling paradise. I've cycled in Girona, Spain. I've cycled in Barcelona. I've cycled in Portugal. I've cycled all over. We have pristine roads, just boast to us. They should be protected. This is not cars versus bikes. This is cars and cyclists. I'm fortunate, I get to cycle because, because it's recreation for me. Many have to cycle for their daily bread. We should be protecting those folks too. So I'm up here to protect not just myself, but for all of us, all of those who, who day by day need, 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 need like to be on their bikes. So I think what you've done is beautiful. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that Bergen County can also get the memo and keep extending it to the bridge. This will make, this will, this will make both our counties a beautiful place to live, a beautiful place to cycle and just a beautiful place, I think, for, for, for our entire, like, communities. Thank you very much.
Ernie, thank you.
Next speaker is Sean Harmon.
Thank you and good evening, county officials, fellow residents. The debate against the new bike lanes can be summarized in three points, flow of traffic, safety of all road users and the best use of our tax dollars. As a multi-decade county resident who owns and regularly uses both car and bike, I support my tax dollars being used to expand equitable and safe roadways for all. Bike lanes may seem like an improvement that benefits just few. In reality, they can create safer, healthier and more efficient communities for all of us. But surprisingly, I've heard a lot more about people's concern on their travel time than safety. So let's start with safety. These lanes encourage more people to ride. When cycling feels safe, families, commuters, students, they all feel far more likely to choose a bike over a car. It reduces congestion, like has been mentioned. It eases parking demand, cuts down on emissions. And all this helps all of us breathe cleaner air and live longer, healthier lives. Second, protected bike lanes are good for local businesses because it provides our county additional tax income. As someone had mentioned, studies consistently show that cyclists are more likely to stop at neighborhood businesses, shops, restaurants than drivers who are just speeding through. Safer streets are more vibrant, walkable, economically resilient streets. It's also about equity and choice. Not everyone has a car. Not everyone wants to drive all the time. Bike lanes did exist, as was mentioned, on River Road before removal for car lane expansion. This reflected gentrification of the coastline where most developments now have private roads and new traffic lights, even with more lights added just this year. The mile and a half stretch from Henley Place to Lydia Drive alone has more than 10 traffic lights servicing only newer waterfront community residents, all of which are interconnected. A real solution to make River Road safer and more efficient for all road users while lowering our tax spend on benefits for an extremely small proportion of residents would be to focus on decommissioning some of these lights, which benefit only the affluent drivers who live in that area who prefer not to have to drive another 30 seconds to the next River Road access point. Others like Edgewater's Admiral Walk Development also proved their indifference over decades of refusing legal orders to connect the Hudson, Hudson River shared path, going back on their, on their word and depriving locals a safe space away from cars. This is disrespect and arrogance, along with just local corruption as personified by the now convicted developer, Fred Ivies, uh, which has led to the safe passage law that was just mentioned. That's 39, 436, in effect since 2022. Drivers must pass on the left lane like they would any other driver or leave no less than four feet of space to pass a cyclist while going 25 or less. How often have people in this room violated this law, whether River Road or elsewhere in New Jersey? Can bike lane opponents suggest where cyclists should go instead for north-south passage that's safe without violating a sidewalk trespass or other law? Not in my backyard suggestions like climbing a 300-foot cliff up to Boulevard East is just, it's unrealistic and it exposes the conceit of those bike lane opponents. And one final misnomer I'd like to dispel, emergency vehicles will legally use these bike lanes when they are stuck in a typical traffic jam of the other five lanes. And it's an easy example of how we all benefit from these bike lanes. It helps all citizens, their safety, their sustainable. They strengthen the fabric of our community. You invest in them. We invest in the future of ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Weissman.
I only have two minutes and 50 seconds.
Josh Weissman.
Went over by 10 seconds.
Go on hedge.
Next speaker.
David Grindens, I'm not sure, G R I J N S.
He's here, he's coming up.
Hi there. My name is David Grins. I live in, uh, the west New York, uh, part of Port Imperial, directly on River Road. My wife and I have been there for the last 12 years. Let me address an issue that's been so far, that so far has gone unmentioned, which is the context of the bike lane in this particular area. In the 12 years that we've lived there, we've seen this area develop, uh, and grow at an astonishing rate. The number of projects currently under construction, whether they're rental buildings, condominiums, hotels, uh, big box stores is through the roof. Building permits are being handed out at a staggering rate, uh, between West New York, uh, Edgewater, North Bergen, uh, and Weehawken. The, there's an interior road that we live on called Port Imperial Boulevard. There are, uh, plans to add 1,500 apartments just for that piece of the road. So for those of you who are familiar with that area, you have the Acme Grocery Store, and then you have the Weehawken Ferry Terminal. There are plans to add 1,500 apartments just for that stretch, which is less than a half mile. So when we're talking about a bike lane on a road that was never built to support this many people, this many structures, this many apartments, this much thoroughfare, trying to do all of the above, meaning provide for all these property developers, allow all this construction to proceed at pace, to then add a double-wide bike lane, we're effectively doing the impossible. We're, we're essentially asking a four-lane road to support a multitude of different services, right? From buses to trucks, to regular passenger vehicles. But we're, we're effectively trying to shunt potentially thousands of new residents, tens of thousands of new residents into a road which cannot be expanded. You've got the cliffs on one side, you have the river on the other. The road cannot possibly be widened. There is also, and it's not that, and we have a petition that's been signed by over a thousand people. It's not that those thousand people are against the bike lane. It's just that we believe there was an alternative proposal, alternative plan, which would have served the interests of bike riders as well as, uh, passenger vehicles and a much better, and a much better, uh, situation. And that would have been to expand the existing promenade, to lengthen the existing promenade past the hospital, which is Hackensack Meridian, the 7,600 River Road, so that that promenade would continue from Weehawken all the way up through Edgewater. Obviously that's a more expensive proposal, but it would eliminate the need to then share the road, which is already too narrow. I'll give you an example. Even just a single car accident on River Road, even without the bike lane, causes traffic on River Road to back up for miles. All it takes is one single accident, but that's what happened. What's happening right now with the bike lane.
Sir, finish up.
Your time.
Your time is up.
Is that we have people driving very, very aggressively. We have ambulances not able to get to the hospital. We have school buses not able to get to schools.
Wrap it up, please. We have the next speaker.
So it's not that we're against it. We just think there's an alternative proposal that makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Stephen Chang. Stephen Chang.
Next speaker.
Tony Morelli.
Hi, Tony Morelli, a trustee of Hudson County Complete Streets and also Vice President of Bike JC here in Jersey City regarding the River Road project. First and foremost, thanks to all of you and to the county administration under County Executive Craig Guy for moving ahead with it. All the groups with which I am affiliated strongly support it. This kind of redesign work in general, including, including physical separation of bikes from moving cars and also genuinely hardened separation is pretty much the first thing Bike JC asks of every level of government. We naturally hope to see many more projects like this on all roads, uh, well, on roads all across this great county. And yes, maybe even more on River Road itself in time to add connectivity. We thank all the many individual people who have emailed the county government and otherwise expressed support for the project. I also want to thank everyone in the area for their patience during the work itself. All road construction causes some temporary disruption and we know this one has, as your chairman just referenced. I would encourage anyone with specific technical concerns about the project itself, frankly, to keep raising them. Sometimes the answers are tweaks that are made after the planned build is finished and engineers see how it works in practice. Sometimes the engineer, the answer is the next project. But the end result of projects like this one all over this region, and indeed all over the world, has been safer transportation for all road users, along with less pollution, better public health, slowing of climate change, and ultimately less need to spend taxpayer dollars in the ways that catering exclusively to cars inevitably demands. As a Jersey City resident without a car, I too am very familiar with the river. It's a road we have long hoped to see made safer. Many of us in this town remember that 11 years ago, a Jersey City resident named Tony Tyson was killed by a driver on River Road while riding his bicycle. So it is in Tony's memory that I will, in conclusion, reiterate our thanks and our full support.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Raul Regus. Raul Regus. Next speaker is Dean Bellew.
Next speaker.
Bryce Cristiano.
Hey, Commissioner, how's it going? My name is Bryce Cristiano. I'm, uh, live in Port Imperial. Who am I? Why are we here? Why does my car insurance cost more than my car? Is a hot dog a sandwich? Or is it a warning? And most importantly, why does it take me one hour to drive three miles down River Road? These are some of the questions that I've been pondering while I've been sitting in bumper-to-bumper traffic over the last couple of weeks. I feel firstly that this is a incredibly expensive project. It's been draining money without actually fixing our concerns. Everybody here is for safe bike lanes. Somebody suggested putting them on a promenade, expanding that in a way that actually connects the city more. I also agree. Secondly, as expressed by others, there are more and more condos going up every month. I also live in the Port Imperial area where those, uh, 1,500 units are being added. So we're adding all these houses, we're adding these condo units, but the road isn't being expanded. In fact, it seems like it's, uh, being reduced. It seems like we're removing a lane. Third, the design forces bus riders to step directly into a bike lane with no barrier, no protection that I've heard of myself. Just this week in New York, a woman was tragically struck and killed in this exact situation. Fourth, in practice, um, this won't just be a neighborhood bike lane. There's a lot of people from Jersey City here. But for us living in a neighborhood, it's not just going to be a neighborhood bike lane so we can go to businesses. It's going to become also a Speedway for e-bike delivery drivers, uh, especially as demand grows as we get new residents in the area. Fifth, you know, just this week alone, businesses in the area that are once flourishing are now struggling because of the traffic, which is, you know, granted a temporary, uh, issue that we're facing. And lastly, right now, the traffic doesn't just stay on River Road. It's been spilling over into the upper Palisades as drivers look for different shortcuts to get home. This creates gridlock in other communities, creates unsafe conditions. You know, so for me, like, you know, I just want to be clear about what we're asking for. We're not asking for perfection. We're just asking for some common sense. We're not asking for miracles. We're asking for safety, such as expanding the promenade to go up to Edgewater. We're not asking for luxuries. We're just asking for roads that work. What we have here is not progress, but it feels like regression. And if we let, let it stand, the cost won't just be measured in dollars. It'll be measured in lives, livelihoods, and perhaps the soul of the community. River Road deserves better. Hudson County deserves better and we deserve better too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Jimmy Lee.
Jimmy Lee.
Jimmy Lee. Next speaker is Karen Van Open.
Could I make a request?
Sure.
Cause Jimmy Lee's not here and I see Emmanuel Morgan's here. If, if, if you wouldn't object, if we could allow her, you know, Jimmy, they work together. Who could go after her? Is that okay?
I have another speaker that signed up though. I'll go.
Okay, at the end, yes, because, because they're from the same group and organization.
Go ahead.
It's me, right? All right. Um, man, my name is Karen.
Um, man, my name is Karen. I came here today to talk about vaccinations. Couple of years back, I came to say that it wasn't right how you only had the COVID vaccine at a spot where you could do, where you had to take your car in. And then it got fixed with walk-in clinics, et cetera. Commissioner O'Day was a good ear on that one. What we have right now, and this is, I'm coming with good news, is that there is a fantastic program for people who need the ones that are either not insured or underinsured. And I just want to come here because maybe people don't even know it's out there. And people probably don't know how well it's run. And I just want, you know, to bring that forward, that it's, that compliment to whomever is running that program. I know, I believe the COVID vaccine is going to be coming up soon. They had some government issues that they had to deal with. Now that I'm here anyway, I would like to put my two cents in regarding the bike lane everybody is talking about. I happened to be in that area on Saturday because one might think, why would somebody from Jersey City be in that area? Well, there are stores there and I ride my bike anywhere. I've been doing this for 50 years. Not in Jersey City, only for the last 25 years, but it's just, it's normal to be able to ride your bike where you need to be. And there are stores there that I frequent, so I, if I have the time to go all the way there, that's what I do in the weekend. So I was there on the weekend and I was like, what the heck is with this road? And because it was hard, to be honest. When I heard that there's going to be a bike lane, I was elated. I think it's the right place for it to be. It's going to be safe for the people who have to be, you know, who have to use that stretch of the road for whatever reason. And I, I understand people who are in the car and they probably think, oh my God, there is not even a bike here. But that's because we're that fast. We're not, you know, we're just passing by and we're out of there already. It's not like a car, you know, we don't take up that much space. So I would recommend, you know, I would recommend that people kind of look like how many bikers are out there. And it's way more than you think. And I'm looking forward to a safer way because on my way back, I was on the road and let me tell you that the amount of space that they have to give you, majority of people don't do it. One quick extra thing, can you put a bike lane? Because I came by bike and there's no word to put it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Annabella Pathan. Annabella. Okay, then Commissioner O'Day, who did you say wanted to speak?
Emmanuel Morgan.
Emmanuel Morgan?
Yeah, well, she's coming up. We just want to reiterate to those that are concerned, there is no removal of any traffic lanes. I know that Commissioner Rodriguez, like that, makes sure that said that there is no removal of lanes. It's going to be the same way it was before. The engineer will gladly be after the meeting, taking any questions. And that's our county engineer right there, Mark. So he will meet with you if there's any questions. I know that's a concern for a lot of the constituents of Commissioner Rodriguez. And Commissioner Rodriguez will speak after the final speaker. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Emmanuel Morgan. I'm a co-founder and Executive Director of Hudson County Complete Streets. I just want to say good evening, Commissioners and Chairperson. We are really just here, I just want to join the chorus of gratitude. Thank you truly for the exceptional progress on River Road, for the safety improvements currently being installed. And of course, especially the top-of-the-line, concrete-protected bike lane. Thank you. We understand there's been some delay and some confusion, frustration from residents. We understand that there are still questions to be answered, especially the question about bus rider access. And I had a question that come in, that came in to me about that, that I'll be able to forward. We know these questions will be answered in time, but in the meantime, I am really just here to offer my support to all of you and to the county executive. Thank you for initiating this progress on River Road years ago, authorizing the grant application, taking every step in the process to make this design among the highest-quality street safety designs in the county. This project is a significant step forward in the county's Vision Zero Action Plan. I do have a personal story about River Road, but in the interest of time, I'm going to skip it. And I would love to invite all of you to help us activate the lane when it's finished, to ride on it, to demonstrate our shared commitment to safety for all road users. And I also invite you to share some of the following responses when asked about this project by constituents who may be confused or frustrated. This design is about safety, about complete streets. It's about Vision Zero, yes, but it's also about dignity. It is about not leaving behind our most vulnerable people who cannot afford a car, who have aged out of driving, who are too young to drive, who want sustainable choices. Most of all, it is about equity because we all pay for our roadways in one way or another. Non-drivers pay taxes for our roadways too. Non-drivers, in fact, do subsidize drivers and we have a right to access our roadways that we help pay for. We are in, we in the Safe Streets Community and at Hudson County Complete Streets are ready and available to do public education, to advocate for and celebrate this progress and to partner with you and support you in community outreach and engagement to the best of our ability with professionalism and respect for all, no matter what travel mode that people choose. Thank you again for this immense step forward and for simply doing the right thing.
Thank you, Emmanuel.
Chairman, we have no more speakers.
Commissioner Rodriguez, would you like to? This is the Commissioner Rodriguez represents West New York. Commissioner and Commissioner Basilese represents North Bergen. They'd like to say something.
Could the Commissioner bring the microphone closer so we can hear?
Pull it down, Kath.
Yeah. There you go. Sure.
Yes, I represent Weehawken, West New York, and Gutenberg. And we're not at all opposed to bicycle lanes. That's great. I come from a bicycle town all my life, all my young life. And I think it's a great thing to do, to be able to ride a bicycle and get to where you're going on a bicycle. Very economical and exercise is great when you ride a bike and it's a happier and more free way of transporting yourself. But where we live, Weehawken, West New York and Gutenberg, right by River Road. If you think of Deafino Way, part of West New York coming down, and then we go to that intersection of going left north and right south. It's crazy. It's very, very dangerous. And this construction could have been planned a little better, more informative to the people because all of a sudden, I was not copied on engineering meetings or invited to engineering meetings last year when this happened. We knew it was happening, but we didn't know when. Now, all of a sudden, we're faced with this traffic jam that is keeping mothers bringing their children to daycare in Gutenberg being late to get back home to get ready to go to work in the city. It's created so much catastrophe in people's lives that we are really very concerned with the way that this construction is going. I don't think it's a healthy and safe construction mode. I personally, and I'm sorry to say that. Again, not against bicycle lanes, we're all for that, but not the way that this has been proposed and is going on. The people that are talking about driving, riding bicycles from Jersey City into here and there, far from our area, cannot experience that, those jams in the morning and in the afternoon. You have to live there. And you have to go around. Ambulances are having a hard time getting to the hospital because of the traffic. It's not like the cars can go to the right, to the shoulder or even to the left if the other lane allows it, so the ambulance can go through. It's havoc. It is basically havoc. And I'm sorry, but this is the truth. Thank you.
Okay, one thing before Commissioner Basilese, I know that county executive guy, with his office, was trying to ameliorate the situation with the traffic with regards to law enforcement personnel. So I know he's aware and I'm sure Jenny can also support that statement. So it's not going unnoticed by either branch of the government. Go ahead, Bobby.
As the chairman said before, I'm Bob Basilese and I represent North Bergen and Seacorps.
Microphone closer.
I agree with the people that have been inconvenienced by the traffic. I've gone down there several times. I've helped with the diner, et cetera. I try to come up with solutions. So going forward, I've spoken to the county personnel and we think, I think participation in the planning process helps. I think better notice and communication. A website that possibly has under construction and whatever's under construction potentially could be on that website and give updates. There seems to be a disconnect with the law enforcement with regards to communication. We're going to work on that also. I'm a firm believer that if people are a part of this process, they buy into the process. I don't want to see that traffic. I was down there several times. I live in North Bergen myself. And in all honesty, I've been in touch with a lot of the buildings, the Condo Association Vice President, President. And we just have to do a better job. Everybody understands this contractor was not the best choice. And at the end of the day, nobody wants to see any of the residents in any municipality go through this. It's been difficult. It's almost done. My understanding is that it's going to be done Tuesday? Weather permitting. Okay, weather permit. And again, that's changed, everything's conditioned upon weather. The problem is there should have been some notice of the buildings because today I heard people couldn't get out of their properties because it's paved and then if you do go on to it, it's going to get damaged. So it's all, it's a better process of getting information out there. And I think the county administration, the county commissioners, and all of us need to work together on making that a better process.
Thank you. Any other, go ahead, Bobby.
Yeah, I know they talked about some of the changes in the legislation as it relates to bidding like this to the degree, because we've done it in other instances. Can we look at how we do demonstration of prior like projects? References, review of references, almost like a pre, almost like a pre-bidder process. So you provide not only your qualifications, list of projects, you get, the county's given a period of time to check out not just the ones they have, but whatever, all, all projects like that have been done within the last, whatever, 24 months, 36 months. And then do a review and if there's an ability, so then they can object if they're rejected. So then make sure that you're not bringing somebody here who's doesn't even have the experience of doing this, has a track record of not being able to do it properly on time, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We had the same situation on the safety, traffic safety, traffic calming project on the boulevard between Communipore and Bond Street. That project had to take two times or three times as long as it was originally projected to take. We wound up, I think we probably wound up in litigation with the contractor at the end of the day because at the end of the day, they clearly didn't have the background and previous experience of doing that type of a project. So I think that's just something that we should look into.
I make one more state, one more comment. Chairman. Chairman, one more comment.
Great, great.
Dave, you're not going to like this. As taxpayers move by like this, but I got a lot of phone calls about why was it being done during the day and its cost usually. But some people did say, why weren't we doing this in the evening? I just want to put it out there and it's on the record because I did get people calling me about, why couldn't you do this at night? Still going to affect you going in and out, maybe not as much. But it's not cheap. Not cheap.
You know, Commissioner, we considered that, but there was also the noise factor because we did a job at night.
I understand.
In Weehawken, and trust me, we got the phone calls.
And that's, I'm just putting it on the record.
I know.
You remember.
I remember.
Commissioner, you remember.
I'm putting it on the record just because some people ask me. I don't have that history. I'm the new guy, but at the end of the day.
Mr. Chairman, before we have a motion to close, can I ask Commissioner Sefeli if he approves September 9th, 2025 caucus meeting and the regular meeting of September 11th, 2025, if he votes for that one?
Yes. Commissioner Sefeli.
You're on mute, Al.
Commissioner Sefeli, you have to unmute.
I'm muted, Al.
Mute, Al.
We could do thumbs up and we'll see that's in line.
Hey, Jen.
Can they unmute you?
Can you give us a thumbs up, Al?
Al?
Al.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
I am in the minutes. Yes.
Jenny, Jenny. Do you want to speak on behalf of anything with regards to, with regards to the last topic on behalf of the county executive?
No, we're good.
No. Okay.
No.
No, just, just asking.
Chairman, two quick things before we adjourn. First, I received the information and I received the proposal from the entity that was selected. Doris, I didn't, I'd like to see the other proposal. Those are credible messages. Oh, I. Where's the second? This is, this is an applicant? I thought this was the actual entity itself. I'll talk to this is one and this is the other. And this is the one that got picked and this is the other. This is the one that wasn't scored high. This is the one that was scored high. When I, when I went to school, I don't know, turn papers, it's five times as big, but I thought this was the actual RFP. That was one. But I'll be honest with you, in reviewing this quickly, I have concerns. I'm extremely surprised that you didn't require resumes from individuals that they would be looking to put in the positions. It's very, very vague. X amount of years, preferably Hudson, three years' experience, handwritten in, salary of $50,000. Is that a salary and benefits? $50,000? Who are you going to get to hire? 100%, yeah, I mean, I, I'm shocked at the scoring. I'll be dead honest with you. I'm shocked at how this thing scored with the way it's going. The other thing is Mr. Alonso still here? So I have two quick questions. One, i- is there a reason why that fund always has such a large balance in it?
I'm very frugal when I spend and I don't spend taxpayer dollars. We use a trust account for all our equipment and all the things we use for weights and measures. The money that we bring in, Commissioner, is fines that we issue and registrations for businesses in the county.
And you, how long have you been the, was it the director of it? What's your title?
15 years.
And then what role did you play in, I guess, the process of moving it over?
I didn't have a role in moving it over. I found out by error, I'm sorry.
Oops. I would just say as a course of courtesy, if you're going to make changes, you probably want to at least have a conversation with the individual that's run something for 15 years as a, you know, for future reference, folks.
You didn't. You weren't aware.
Bobby?
No, I was not aware.
Bobby just wanted to say something.
No, I just.
All right, no, I'll leave it. I wasn't aware of that either. All right.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you finished, Commissioner?
Yes.
There being no further business, company for the board may have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, all unfabled. Meeting adjourned.
Yes.